Twenty-three. So again, the items on the agenda that are hold with Republic Common are items number one and items numbers eighteen through twenty-three. Item number twenty-four has been continued to this Friday. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. I have a couple more announcements if I can ask the interpreter to make this first one aloud in the room, please? If you require it in Spanish by the interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreter can interpret.
Si requiere un intérprete para español, por favor pausen después de cada frase o dos para darle al intérprete la oportunidad de traducir.
Don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you.
Y no se preocupe, le pausaremos el tiempo mientras el intérprete esté hablando, entonces recibirá la misma cantidad de tiempo que la persona que está en el show.
One final announcement. In order to help us run an efficient public comment period and your campaign, many people are possible.
As soon as they saw that fucking hit, they were like, let's wrap this shit up.
Call aloud or name inside out.
We gotta edit it and post now, god damn it.
You always gotta have a picture here, but it's always gotta look.
Please still be aligned on your left-hand side of the conference chair. Thank you.
So watching them and see if they call some of the terrorist stuffs.
Kirsten Peterson, Christopher Garner, and Ziggy.
You can go ahead.
Thank you.
I'll wait after audit. Make it easy.
Okay.
Well.
Unless she says.
I don't wanna go.
Good morning. Would you like to speak to?
Good morning. If you're having a crisis or anything, my name is Aviva. And I'm ten years old. The moral of the case of the kid is essential to have a good project. God has made me a priest. On it and has taught us many prayers for kids. There are some of. And keep me and my children away from the worshiping of idols. Surah Abraham. My Lord, make me a prayer prayer and my children too. Surah Abraham. Our Lord, grant us a call and give us the delight of our lives and make these of us and leaders of the right. Ladies and gentlemen, my question is all.
Who's up next? Uh, she can go. Do you wanna go first? Okay, I'll go first.
Did you want it?
No, I'll go for him.
Good.
Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
Yes, good morning. Let me have all multiple items open for public comment as well as general public comment.
If we are to rely on that one of the general people begin, yeah, go ahead.
So, beginning on eighteen, and I'll walk you through the rest. This was actually a property discussed at the Judge Carter case for removal from the RAP program. And one of the things they actually discussed about this particular account is that there was no definitions as to the stipulation of how long the unit needed to be lasting, as well as whether or not the bedding created for that particular account was actually defined in the settlement agreement program. And it's difficult to.
You mentioned item eighteen, that is, we item a red escrow account program.
Yes.
Would you like to speak to any of the other items, or you would want to speak to the current general if you like?
I am speaking on eighteen through twenty-three and item number one. So again, on the R E P program, testimony was given as to whether that account is actually a feasible account to go into escrow, and whether any of the funding in that escrow account is able to be tracked, whether there's expenditures that are tracked, whether there's not any expenditures tracked. And the interesting thing is in the Judge Carter case, testimony was given that there are no expenditures tracked, either on the R E P program or any other account for any of the homelessness initiatives in the city of Los Angeles. So moving on to item number nineteen, we have a communication from L A H D. And again, it's another property under the settlement agreement that was not defined clearly as to whether the bedding that was used at that property was clearly defined as what constitutes a bed, who has management supervision of the bed, who has tracking of the expenditures of any of the properties, including the one on Oxford Street. And similarly, yet again, we find another motion, item number twenty, that again was testified to, lack of expenditures, lack of general accepted accounting principles. And we have item number twenty. We have item number twenty-two. We have item number twenty.
The items on the move here is under public comment.
So we have item number twenty-two, which is supplementing community outreach and engagement. The comments that were made under testimony were actually that no community outreach is actually done as part of these alleged funds that are obtained. There's nobody actually going into the community doing any sort of intake, nobody actually doing any sort of tracking as to who's getting these alleged program services, as to how well they're doing after receiving the alleged program services, as to how much time and money was spent on each of the outreaches. And so how could you possibly then track any sort of success, any sort of positive outcomes for the individuals allegedly that are being claimed to be helped? Well, Judge Carter has a very clear stance on that, and so do all the testimony from all your deputies. They all say it's fraud. They all say it's non-existent. They all say it, literally, we knew it's fraud, and we continue to perpetuate it anyway at the behest of the city attorney's office. And now with that, it makes a great transition to the general public comment aspect of all this, right? Which is, who is at the helm of making all of these contracts and knows where the money's going and all the fraud occurring? Who is the general counsel for the city? Well, gee golly, by and large, it's the city attorney's office. So who do you think knows from day one that all this criminal racketeering of fraud is going on? From all the real estate deals happening over a fifty-five year span with interest not being clearly defined as to whether it's fair market or whether it's a proprietary equation, you pull out your ass, and what the hell it means, and who gets that money? Nobody has defined it. It was testified to as such by Zabo, by the chief mayor deputy, by the mayor that was hired to oversee the homelessness initiatives. And the two billion is a drop in the bucket over the long fifty-five year term span, where it's trillions of dollars, where it's guaranteed profit going. And when the city can't pay that in cash settlements, they have to pay in kind via assets that they turn over to private entities, in this case, as developers, to which Heidi comes from the banking sector and had affiliations with the Enron Corporation to commit fraud.
Thank you. For the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Mohammed Sulema, Christina Cardena, and Al.
That's you. That's you.
Hello, our promises that I have to go next.
Hi, would you like to talk about items like this on?
Yeah, this is all.
Good morning. Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
Good morning, Mr. Attorney. I would like to speak to, I forget the number, but I think you'll recognize in my, my speech.
What are you, the items are that are on the public comment, item number one, that's a law and an domain item. Items eighteen through twenty-one were your three items. Item twenty-two and item twenty-three.
That's the ones about taking people's houses, right? Like, uh, like everything you just said was like, I don't know, I understand what you're saying. I wanna talk about the eminent domain and the transfer of property and the veto power. That's okay?
Okay, so it's two items. So I'm gonna give you two minutes for the items.
No, I want that's three items. No, that's three. I want all five items.
Hey, you need three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
I'll be taking my minute, Mr. Attorney. Good morning, Mr. Zarin. This is a tough, I don't know, it's like, I'm not serious, okay? All right, so, all right, let's get started. I'm gonna start first talking about, you know, the taking of people's property. What's called eminent domain? I'm not a big fan of that, and I can't wait to do like the replay on Smokey again, because I really wanna hear what he feels, because I like his opinions. I love to hear his opinions on that. Well, he has needs, I think he has some things. And, because my opinion is that when people say they buy a house, like say if I grew up in a house, right, and I've been living all my life in this house, and say, you know, my parents worked hard to get it, and then I have it, and I, sorry, and I think it's just horrible that you guys can just come and take it from me, and I mean like, because you need whatever. And I'm not saying, I like, I understand sometimes that you have to do things, you know, like you need land and everything, but you would think with all your city planning that you would have planned a long time ago what you would have needed or try to work it out. And then I worry on the flip side, when you're gonna take people's land, that like, are you just doing it as a, you know, as a grab and not being really considerate of who's living there? And I understand how Mr. Price's like wife helps with those kinds of transitions and everything, but.
But you're not, you're working on item one.
Isn't there two of them? I think there's two of them. Is there only one? Okay, thank you, sir. Um, okay, what about these properties that are, that you're taking off escrow? Um, like, you know, what's gonna happen with them? Can we pass them out? Can we give them to people? Can I have one? Like, you know, I would love to have a yard, you know, let my dogs run around. I think that'd be great. And so I would love that. And also, the other one, let's go with the veto one. Like, to me, it almost sounds like there's trouble in paradise. Because if you're here to vote on whether or not you can override the mayor's veto, my first inkling is to think that William must not have confidence in the mayor at this point, and that's interesting, and that's okay. I mean, I think a lot, maybe a lot of people have confidence in the mayor these days. So I'm not judging for that, but I just find it like, you know, like, and I think you, I guess I'm kinda conflicted. Yes, I don't think that she should have the last say. And I, I agree, like actually, if you can get ten of you to override her, as long as you're making the right decision for the people and not your own self-interest, then I think that's a good thing. Um, I forget what other comments are there. Can I just see if everyone's awake? Like, does that matter? Does that, because their names are on the, you can do that?
So who wants to speak to the general?
Oh, I can? Okay. I don't think Bob's awake, but no.
Okay, so the movie, the general public comment.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so, good morning again. Hopefully you're all awake and listening. We'll see. But I, I have a permit for a peaceful, okay, peaceful protest. We're protesting against the abuses of family separation and ADA abuses on Elrond Hubbard Way. You've heard me, I think you've heard me talk a time or two, once in a while, about these abuses and about the abuses of Scientology. I'm, of course, being fair game. I'm, of course, they're coming after me in different ways, which I'm not surprised, but I believe it so much in standing up for the victims that have not had a voice or they're still struggling to find their voice, and I'm willing to take those slings and arrows or whatever for the victims. And I just wanna let you know, you know, I am not suicidal. I am not, you know, so if anything happens to me, okay? You know, I'm happy, I'm being threatened, okay? And what Jennifer Proskoff, who is a Scientologist, is helping us out, so I'm thankful to her. Thank you. It's Shalit Smokey, Cam.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
I start with item number eighteen, Tongba Chen. Item number nineteen, Shrimp Eggroll.
Hold on, no, 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 hold on. Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, it's an actual serious comment. It's actually a ser- I know, but the same shit that's happening to her, I'm getting fucking tire slash. I actually, I know, I seriously, I actually did, and I'm telling you, what's happening to her, having a RO against one of people that is doing some of this, it's legit. She's not lying, and I'm not lying. I'm not saying, I'm serious, yeah. Hundred percent, no, hundred percent. Yes. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah. It's. Just a little game, yeah, right, no, absolutely, yeah. It's all I wanna do, is let you know, it's legit, and it's literally happened. All I wanna say is thanks for listening, that's all, that's all I wanted to say. Appreciate it.
Uh, I'm here to talk about our, our damaging, uh, crowdfunding crisis. And I heard that the agenda lineup is that the mayor was trying to veto, and then somehow the council, you know, they're trying to fight with the mayor, the mayor's trying to fight with the council. Nobody can figure out, you know, how deal with the budget. Well, let me tell you who knows how deal with the budget, especially for all the local county listeners, that council member Spender is an expert leading with the budget. He will make sure that the city does not waste billions of money to go homeless. Well, on your hopeless combination, if you do go out, our council member Spender will make sure every single idea that starts in the budget that will have enough overtime to take down the gas, to take down the wages, to take down the sugar, to take down all of those evil activities in the city. Thank you very much, uh, council member Spender.
Thank you. And for the next speaker, I think you would like, hey, more like the interpreter. All you need to do is let the clerk's office know four hours advance, and we'll be your last public comment. So for the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Stacy Cigarbollinger, Thomas Dion Bailey, and Adam Steeler. Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
General Public Comment.
Okay, so go ahead.
Good morning, Michael C. Council of the City of Los Angeles. My name is Christina Cardenas. I'm a project coordinator for L A General Medical Center Foundation, joined today by Breathe 3 L A Coalition that stand in solidarity with community members to share ongoing efforts related to secondhand smoke exposure in multi-story housing and its impact on breathing environments. One out of every three non-smokers who live in rental housing are exposed to secondhand smoke. We know that of certain populations, including seniors, children, persons with disabilities, and those that are in economic status are both represented in rental housing and are exposed to harmful secondhand smoke. In twenty twenty-three, members of Breathe 3 L A Coalition provided public comment to city council, highlighting community concerns around tobacco, vape, and marijuana exposure in multi-story housing. Since then, we have remained engaged with communities and local leaders across all fifteen council districts through district events. And have acted as a city partner.
Next speaker. Next, as we're waiting for the next speaker to come up, I understand the time to go quickly, and if for some reason we run out of time or unable to call your name today, you're always welcome to come back at future meetings, but if you'd like to leave the written public comment, you're more than welcome to do so at LACouncilComment.com. You can find that URL by doing a quick Google search. It should be the first thing that comes up. The URL is also available at the top of every council agenda. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
The speaker I want to talk about, so long, my little heart, I want to know from, 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 from. We would like to talk about four. Leave us is the veto message from your mayor. Piece of shit mayor. Sixteen three fifteen, the door. See me with the budget. The budget is still control. And I know, when I was talking to the F B I the other week, they told us that the mayor, because of the better investigation, let's give F B I a. And you would, thank you, and I appreciate that our mayor is going to host a meeting regarding the budget and regarding security. Also, you're the only group that can mention the budget. And portion by you, this is for the members. This will have some snacks available, so you can have more eating pleasure. It will increase attendance to the meetings. Now, your eminent domain. I'm not very aware of my property. I don't wanna eat just I'm not very much. About the eminent domain, they go by the secret release, they go, ha, 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 ha. And I say, ha, ha, ha. And then what you do is, is they cut off your apartment, and then they offer you money for your property, and they buy your goats. And then what they do, they take your entire world, and they take your house, and they deport you. And then I come to the United States of America with Mr. Misa, and I apply for political asylum, you know, you. This is what I want to hear. This is what this is. All the opposition regarding the termination of the right to property, the right to free speech, and we are responsible, right? You know, you see what I'm saying? It's not even fair, that's like, I can do anything, I can do black one. Now, I don't do. I don't guess that they didn't like this, I got to do this, I thought, ah. We don't go, and what I did, my English is terrible. Number forty-two, or the France to steal, or the importation. First of all, you have to both give a shout out to the game, this is what we do, so. This is what we're gonna do, this is, you know, since he taught me this before, this is what we do. Say that, this is what we do, we support the game immediately, because we want to take a ticket to go home, and for the meeting, just to sell the car, never let the car to me, this is what we do, yeah. This is what we do, number forty-two. We take the city road, the.
You're a member of the board of the general public.
This is what we do, number forty-two. So now, this is what's left of my spring yard in my backyard, and everybody exploded on Tuesday night. The word of City Hall, this is City Hall. So what happens, Markyzy, is they go in your backyard, and they cut a tiny decision into your sprinkler system over here. And then, it leaked a little bit, and you open the bars, and it blow up, and take your heart, but it's like a, I completely out. This is what City Hall do. Now, how does City Hall do it? This is what we do. We will kill you if you don't support our justice. We can be a little blind, we can give a shit, we won't draw the weaknesses. I wish I had one time, but I want to tell you that we have been focused on camera.
Thank you. Your time has expired, and as we're waiting for the next speaker to come up.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Spender, you were now the judge for the entire time you addressed the audience, making the announcement. Do not disrupt the meeting in, for you to be subject to rule number twelve and eligible for removal. You have been given your time. You do not need to be removing you anymore. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate your patience. Obviously, the views.
Yeah, that's all the good ones. I don't really care afterwards. Let's just show the people. So, explain to the people.
Okay, this part I had to cut, so. So, when it's in place, this is your sprinkler controller. Okay, so, this is what turns your sprinklers on. This is street pressure, one hundred and sixty P S I underneath there. So what they do is they make a small crack into the support. That's how they do it, small crack. And then what happens is the pressure will build, and they leave it loose. And eventually, it leaks a little bit. And so you'll hear the thing going, psh, and it'll start leaking. So you have to go into the ground, into the box, and check it to make sure it's okay. Then when you open the box, if they get lucky at City Hall, it pops off. And then it, right in your fucking eye, and takes your goddamn fucking eye out, right in your fucking head. It's almost like getting hit by a buckshot. So, to replace it, you have to cut this with a sawzall. You have to take it off in two sections. You have to put. Oh, no. Okay, so now, you have to buy a new one. You have to buy new screws in the bottom. Then you have to put and cement them in and replace it into the street. Now, if you had a professional do this repair, it would cost you three to five hundred dollars to do that repair. I can do it for about thirty dollars a part. This is not the first time they've done this in the last ten years. This is the fifth time they've done it. So.
This is, so, for those on the, on the, on the line, hold that really quick. I just want them to hear. That's solid.
Solid as a rock.
That takes a lot to do that. You can't, you can't just, that's not something you just.
Strongest part of the, of the mechanism.
Yeah, it's not something that just happens.
No.
There's no way.
No.
Like, this thing is, and look how thick the whole thing is, too.
And I just replaced this.
It's at least an inch thick.
I probably replaced this back, maybe five years ago. Um, so, you know, I bought this myself. I replaced relatively new.
Yeah, and I mean, this too, is, is this.
Yeah, so that's the part that it's, oh, no, this is the part. This is what, this is what exploded.
And that's, look at that, it's at least a quarter inch thick. There's just no way.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's sabotaged.
Because it's not like this is in free hang, where it's supporting its weight. It's cemented down, so the cement is holding this, and there's just no way.
It's, yeah, it's made of, it's fabricated into one piece.
Right.
It's this thing.
Right.
It's the thickest part of the machine. And this is in the ground. It's covered. There's no weight on it. It's completely sealed away from sunlight.
There's no way.
Yeah, so that's, that's how they do it, you know, this one, and, you know, and, you know. And if you're away, and like, you're not there, this thing will leak all the water from the street, past your house, and you can't shut it up except from the street. And this will cost you thousand to five thousand dollars in water. And it will flood the entire fucking driveway. It can flood the foundation of your house, too. And it was going pretty good when I, when I saw it. This happened about one thirty in the morning. So, I have to turn the water off manually, which I, which I've been doing for ten years. Literally, when I leave, I have to turn the fucking water off manually to the street. And I do it. Nothing has happened in about eight months now. This is the longest time of peace I've had, and then this just happens. So they just come, and they just fucking conduct terror. And they, they want you dead. They want you destroyed, and they will stop at nothing. Because that fucking hearing over in that federal courthouse has apparently got their attention. So, anyway, what a fucking shame, you know. It's just, so last night I bought the parts to replace it.
And for what it's worth, this too is also, it takes force to even move this, like, you have to put some serious force.
Oh, yeah.
This is not, it's not a cheaply made.
This is a good one. It's a genie. It's a genie. So, you know, this is how you turn it off, you know, so, just like that. So you're, to turn it on manually, this is your control. And then it just goes, this is, this is an anti-siphon. This is a siphon valve. This is, this is all new. I mean, I literally changed this like, just a few years ago. This is like new shit.
And you guys don't have the extreme cool and heating cycles that the East Coast has. That's, the brittleness.
But, but this is covered.
And this is covered.
This is covered. This is not indirect sunlight, it's covered.
And again, you don't have snap freezes that would otherwise make plastic brittle. It's, if it's covered, then it literally has no such issue.
I mean, you know, the, the, it's in, it's in excellent shape. The silicone is in perfect shape.
Right, right.
It's in, so, this is just a, a very good piece of equipment that was sabotaged. And it's done because of these fuckers. This is their surrogate. It's not them personally, it's people that.
Three.
Affiliates.
Three lines removed.
Three lines removed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the standard.
Yeah, so, you know, what happens, um, you catch them on camera. If you get lucky, you get a license plate.